All right, I'm going to kick off tonight's Select Board meeting, May 15th, 2023, 6:00 PM at the Rutland Public Library. I'd like to start by saying the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, unto the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome all the new faces, the new three new, three new Select Board members. We're looking forward to working with you. And in the order of business, our first call to order will be the reorganization of board offices. At this time, I would like to make a motion to nominate Leah Whitman as Chair of the Select Board, myself, Thomas Galvin, as Assistant Chair of Select Board, and Jen Ledger as Clerk of Select Board. Do I have a second?
I have a discussion. I'd like to, well, we got a, I like, I think it's improper word. I'd like to offer my own slate, on which I'd like to offer Leah Whitman as Chair, myself as Vice Chair, and Tom as Clerk, Tom Galvin as Clerk. So I don't know what we're doing.
Well, we had one motion already, so.
So I think it's Tom's motion.
He's first.
Right, so that's first. And he was waiting for a second, I think. So I will second the motion at minimum for discussion. And then we can vote and, or.
Yeah, I mean, the only, was that the only discussion?
Yeah, that was it. That was the discussion. I mean, unless you offer some background as to why you feel you want the position.
Well, I think.
Maybe the townspeople would like to know.
Sure, I think, well, first of all, my suggestion that Leah, Leah's been on the board for five years. She's put a lot of hard work and effort on this board. I think she's earned the right to chair.
I do agree.
Myself, I'm the second longest member of this board. And I believe I've earned the right to step up as well. And that's why it's time to step up. That's what I'd like to do. As far as Jen, she's a new member of the board. She says she has experience as a clerk. So that's why I picked them.
Okay. I, recently I threw my hat in, is I understand and I value your positions on the board previously. Where neither one of you have been a chair before, and you're new. I am looking to help out, kind of in the background, guide the chair by my experience and the years that I put in this town, a lot of stuff I know, that can be of benefit to her on that. So that was why I.
No, I appreciate that.
If, if I may, I view my role, if I'm, if I'm Chair, when I'm Chair, if I'm Chair, being a lot more collaborative than previous. And so I think I am looking for, I would be looking for not being a gatekeeper and allowing communication to really flow among all of us and keep doing the next right thing for town and looking at it from that perspective. So I think I would work very well with any of you. I've met with all of you just as meet and greet and to get to know you. And so I appreciate that. And I would work very well. I guess some of my considerations is I think that I'm not on any other serving, a member serving on any other board or commission. I'm ones that are appointed, ex officio, or looking for a Select Board member. And I think that there's value to having diversification in leadership. I also appreciate the experience that, that you bring. And so I know as CIPC Chair, that that's two, two pieces to that puzzle that are kind of in dichotomy. So that's some of my consideration.
Okay. I feel that communications are a very important part of what we do here. And letting the town know just where we are on these certain issues and what we're doing is a big part of what we need to be, what we need to improve on. So at this particular point in time, that is where I would be looking to, our efforts to go.
All right, so we got a second. We'll just go down the line and vote.
Day.
Whitman, yes. Ledger, yes.
Galvin, yes. Congratulations, Chair.
Thank you. Congratulations. And I really view this as being an opportunity to, to corral everyone together and step forward. And so I'm not looking as it being a very strong chairship and looking for input from everyone. So thank you for that, that opportunity. So the next item on the agenda is minutes, Treasury warrant and payroll. I'm not sure for minutes to Mika because it's just two of us. We just approved conditional, I mean, we did look into this today. The board can approve them. There are allowances since this is a new board. It would just have to be Tom and Leah that make the motion and the second.
Okay. All right, so I'll look for a motion for Treasury warrant and payroll.
I would like to make a motion to approve Treasury warrant 23-23 and payroll 23-PW-23. Is that so?
Any of the board members can make the motion. A second. Is there any, anything, Austin, that needs to be highlighted or anything? And for board members, generally, the Treasury warrant and payroll information is in the Select Board's office. I think Donna's been emailing them out, but not usually until that Monday night or so. So they are available if you want to pre-read or have a look.
All right. I have looked at those. I scanned them extensively before we came here. And I saw some things that, that I found was, for example, Oakham doesn't have enough police. So we've been using our police to send them over there. And I think that's great. And of course, Oakham, you know, pays us for that. And those kinds of things, when I dig through there, something I think is important, that we look at where our money is being spent and where it's coming from. So I did that, but other than that, I found nothing wrong. And appreciate, Austin, doing that, that we're, we're okay with that. I'm okay with that.
Thank you for spending the time on that. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Does it pertain to the?
Nope, I'm sorry.
Okay. So I'll take a vote.
All right, so we'll start with those two gentlemen. You want to just do this from now on, and then we'll go with the clerk up, up the ladder, or?
Oh.
Whatever.
Yeah, you got, yeah, let's, we'll start with you, Harry, then Paul, then Jen, then me.
Okay. Suckman, yes.
Mattson, yes. Recuse myself from cable.
Ledger, yes.
Galvin, aye, excluding safe place.
And Whitman, aye. Thank you. Yes, Peter.
Excuse me, about minutes. Council and I have had previous conversations about adoption of motions with less than the total quorum. It's okay, as long as you have a quorum present and the number of members present and voting agree to the motion, then the motion passes. So you could have the two people who were there motion and second. Everyone else abstains, and it's a valid motion for acceptance of meeting minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. So it looks like we have two sets of meeting minutes, one from May 1st and one from May 6th, which was the meeting held before the annual town meeting. I would prefer.
All right, make a motion to approve the meeting minutes, May 1st, 2023. And you want to do one at a time, Tamika, or?
No, you can do both.
And May 6th, 2023.
Whitman, seconds.
No discussion?
Is there any discussion on the minutes?
Suckman abstain.
Mattson, approved.
Ledger abstain.
Galvin, aye.
Whitman, aye. Thank you. And generally, just for the board's notice, this is generally how Tamika provides us the minutes. They'll also be emailed in our packet. So if there's anything you'd like to see differently or whatever. So now we will move into public comment. We have a few people here. Is there anyone for public comment?
Nope.
Nope, okay. So we'll move into department head updates. We have Fire Department Chief Seth Knight.
Okay, thank you for having me here this evening. Last time I was in front of the previous board was in February. So basically, this is the first four months of this calendar year update. As some of you may be aware, we received, the town spent town money on pandemic-related items over the last three years. That, all the paperwork has been submitted to FEMA. All the money has been reimbursed to the town. So we have been made whole on all federal projects regarding pandemic. As you know, the pandemic closed out last week. So we're now moving forward in a new phase. I've completed the OPERA compliance reporting. That was due on April 30th. I finished that on April 5th. Everything was submitted and reconciled. Because we have a population under 250,000, we only have to do annual reporting. We don't do quarterly reporting. So if, if anyone's asking on that. And because we also took the $10 million waiver under lost revenue, we only received 2.6, but any, if you could go up to $10 million and report it as lost revenue. So the federal government looks at the 2.6 million dollars that we've received as fully obligated money. Okay, even though we may have not have spent it all or obligated to certain projects, but because we took that under the lost revenue, they consider all 2.6 as obligated. So just be aware of that. All that money's been received and is being held by the town. So there's no chance of it leaving us. So just be aware of that. On the department side, 2023, as of today, we've had 590 total emergency calls. This is not a total call of service. These are true 911 emergency calls. And we're within two or three of last year. So this is probably one of the first year in the last five years that we haven't seen a huge increase. So things are going right on key. As you are aware, brush fire season has been very prevalent this year. We had one last night, and again this morning. With lack of rain not coming until this weekend, we could see some difficulties as the week goes on. Public safety staffing, we've been fully funded since October. All the new people have settled in, in our, into their new roles, into their individual group assignments, and are all working very well. Over the last month, we've been doing a lot of fire prevention outreach. Our staff has been out the last couple of weeks with a fire safety trailer. If you've seen it, it's a big, huge trailer that's being pulled around town. We've targeted our most vulnerable population, our senior staff and our senior resident population, as well as our children with disabilities. So those are the core groups that we focused on. And then we really addressed the preschool and the school age kids during October, during Fire Prevention Week as well. Budget, FY '23, as we're coming into the final stretch, as long as we don't have any major fires, we should make it through this year with no issues. As you know, the FY '24 budget was approved last week. We're in the early stages of updating our job description. And hope to have the new deputy fire chief start September 1st. That's our goal. Grants, just to update you on grants, I know it was a big conversation at town meeting, and I just wanted to highlight some of the things we've done. We received some federal grants that we've had to close out during this fiscal year. One of them was a safer staffing grant that we hired three firefighters with. That was an amount of $524,000. That was closed out in February. So that was a three-year grant that paid for staffing over three years. Also, the assistance to firefighter grants, and we closed that out. This was a grant in the amount of $300,000, and that replaced our ambulance that you see running around town. Some grants that we've received during this year was the Emergency Management Planning Grant, the amount of $2,900. The town had to match that amount. We were able to buy two portable radios with that. The Volunteer Fire Assistant Grant, this is managed through the DCR. This is because we're a population of under 10,000. We receive $3,000 on that. The town, again, had to match that as well to leverage that money. And we were able to purchase new fire hose that were outdated. As I spoke earlier on our fire prevention, we received $2,077 in senior safe funding. This is fire education programs targeted to the seniors. We were working on that. The student education, fire education grants of $3,700. And again, that's those money that we use to target our kids in the schools and the preschools around town. The last one, the fire safety equipment grants, that was an amount of $15,500. This grant purchased emergency escape harnesses for the firefighters' turnout gear. So if they get trapped above a second floor, we can bail out a window and get to safety as well. Just so you know, we have two large grants pending. Another is a safer staffing grant for $1.2 million for a three-year staffing grant of 100% over the three years. This was targeted and applied for prior to town meeting, just in case the override failed, that we could pursue these positions and pay for them over the next several years. This will be awarded by the end of the federal fiscal year. So the goal is if we get funding prior to hiring the staff, the grant would pay for the staff and the town would have to use the funds. The last one is the assistance to firefighter grants. Now, this is to replace our ladder truck, which is 24 years old, in the amount of $1.2 million, or 75% of the total cost of replacing the ladder. And again, we should hear that by September as well. So a lot of things going forward on the grant side. We're very active, and we leverage everything we can and utilize our staff to do research and to help support that and write the grants. So that's it for the fire.
Through the chairs, Chief, I'm just curious, with the ladder truck, so you said the grant covers?
75%.
Or the full amount if it's one point?
What is it? Ladder truck now is almost $2 million.
Are they really?
Yeah, in two to three, two to three years to build. So if you ordered today, you wouldn't see it for probably three years.
And that's something you definitely think, I mean, moving forward, this town needs, is the ladder truck?
Ladder truck is only good for 25 years.
Oh, okay.
So we're, we're coming to end of life. We've been working with the CIPC to make sure it's on their radar. Each year I come back to them and just do the cost of inflation. The price has gone just escalating so quickly. And that's why we're trying to leverage our federal dollars to get some of that recovered to the town.
You think it's going to be like the ambulance, where they're, we're going to get something ordered, and then they're going to turn around and say the axle's?
I don't, I don't think that's going to be an issue. Because we're not, we're basically, we'd be buying a ladder truck built from the frame rail up from one manufacturer. We wouldn't have a dual source or you dealing with one, one manufacturer and then another manufacturer at the same time, so.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
Chair?
Yeah, sure.
I got a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
When you say the 2.6 million is totally obligated for our money now, so it's obligated, even though it hasn't been spent, the government is still considering it?
Obligated funds.
Off, off the table?
Correct.
Is that something that's new that's come down recently?
It's because of the way it's reported to the federal government through their portal, is they show all 2.6 million as obligated funds because of lost revenue.
Very good.
Because of how we selected to use it.
Okay, that's great. I know we were having a discussion before about, with the Joint Committee on what was going to be given, how to go back. So I'm glad to hear it isn't.
Yep.
That's great. Question number two. You had a grant for staffing for three years.
Correct.
What happens now that the grant is gone? Do we still have those personnel on staff?
So back in 2020, when we received the federal grant for $524,000, that was to hire three full-time staff. And at that time, that grant was 75% the first year, 75% the second year, and 35% the third year. And then after the third year, the town pays 100% of their salaries. What we have done and we have proven is the cost of their salaries and benefits over those three-year period is we've increased our ambulance revenue because of the additional staff to cover 100% of that staffing increase. But because the funds go to the general fund, I cannot show it as an offset to the fire department operations. But it shows up on the revenue side. And so even though our budget has gone up, the revenue of the ambulance has gone up to cover that cost.
That's great. I think that's, I'm glad you were able to identify that for the citizens listening. The question, the follow-up question to that is, with those three additional people over those years, where's your staffing at in your department?
So currently now, we staff 11 full-time firefighters. They work a rotating shift of every third day. So I have nine of them work every third day. So they work a 24-hour shift. I have two firefighters that work 12-hour days. So they work four days on, four days off. So from 7:00 in the morning to 7:00 at night, we have four people on during the day. And on the overnight, from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, we have three staffed in the fire station. So that's where we're at.
So would you consider yourself 100% fully staffed?
In order, well.
Tricky question, I know.
Okay, so the question is, are we fully staffed to what has been approved and funded? The answer is yes. Are we where we need to be? The answer is no. In order to be able to meet the NFPA standard as far as emergency response to emergencies, we need to have so many firefighters available within the first 14 minutes of a fire incident. And we don't come anywhere near that. And I'm not looking, you can never staff for every catastrophic incident. But you need to be able to, be able to at least get the first truck out the door with a minimum of four, 24 hours a day.
Auxiliary firefighters, do they count at all?
They do, but it's the delay. It's the delay from them responding from home. Right now, we're down to 16 on-call firefighters. And, you know, you go back 10, 15 years ago, we'd have 30, 35. And that's because they either still worked in town, they worked for the DPW. Go back 20-plus years ago, they worked for Sims Cab, and they would be able to be released.
They were within that time limit.
Exactly. But now everyone is just working so far away from Rutland that, you know, during the daytime hours, whatever you have for full-time staff is what you have.
Okay.
So.
And my last question, three. The fire truck.
Yep.
You're right, you brought it through CIPC. We've been following it and working on it. Has the grant always been 75%? Or have they reduced that amount in the follow-up grants?
The problem is, is the grants aren't keeping up with the cost of inflation. So right now, the town would only have to contribute 5%. But that 5% wouldn't give you enough to purchase a new, and it has to be new. You can't buy used on the federal program. So that's why the 75% is what that 1.2 million would cover.
So if this were approved at the November town meeting, let's say, we still wouldn't get it for?
Three years.
Three years?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. It's all my questions, Chair.
I have one question. I'm just curious. Are you still requiring firefighter EMT for admission?
So right now, all full-time staff have to be dual-purpose. They have to be the firefighter and the EMT. We also take on-call part-time staff that are just firefighter-trained or just EMT-trained. So we'll utilize either, either one. Obviously, the dual role is much preferred because of the amount of call volume that we do. So doors always open, and we'll always help to get them trained as well.
Thank you.
Please, Paul. You mentioned that the fire truck is, the old fire truck is just, the ladder truck is, is not, when will it go out of compliance?
At 25 years old.
When?
So that would be in 2024.
24, and it takes us three years to get the new one? So what happens in the meantime?
Basically, as long as it still passes the annual inspection.
Okay.
But the problem is now, it's getting to the point where it is extremely costly to keep it going. In the last three years, we probably put $70,000 into it to keep it going.
Okay.
And it's just, it's starting to see the end of life. So that's, that's the concern.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you, Chief. Next, we have our town planner, David George.
So the, the planning office remains a very busy office with lots of things on the table, including the active subdivisions, ADRs, and other projects. Recently, at the last town meeting, the Home Occupation Bylaw was passed, as well as some technical corrections. The Home Occupation Bylaw is a, it made some small improvements by bringing into play more comprehensive standards for the, for the by-right option, and it added some requirements for the major home occupation. We're hoping that this will be an economic development generator, allowing people to start off in their homes for projects or jobs or enterprises that they think might be able to be grown from there. And then if everything goes well, hopefully, they decide to expand in town. And some other areas in town that we're looking to redevelop, such as the town center and some other areas. As folks hopefully know, the RDIC property has been conveyed in part to Harmony Place for 144 units of age-restricted housing. Phase one is underway. If you go up there, you'll see that there's large pieces of equipment moving, lots of dirt, getting the site ready for phase one. So that's very exciting news. The third item here, Economic Development Commission continues to meet on a monthly basis. Planning staff has assisted that group with its projects and try to establish a work plan and get some projects moving. Some of the things that they have identified so far are updates to the website, the Economic Development Page. The group received a small grant from the CMR PC to develop a social media strategy. That's currently ongoing. The goal there is to create a calendar and link that to Instagram, Facebook, and other social media to promote messages from Economic Development Commission and also town-wide events. This is a pilot program, so we're confident that this will be successful here and then can be rolled out in other communities in Central Mass area. And also maybe used more widely across the organization. I know that there's other, other, other departments and committees that would have a need for this type of thing. The Economic Development Commission is also working on a draft job description for an Economic Development Coordinator. This goes back to last year. The idea was to try to work regionally with other communities, but that, the timing wasn't there for that. It could possibly be funded through OPERA or possibly funded through the Community Compact. This is a work in progress. And I think at some future meeting, the EDC Chair will be here to further discuss this with the board. Just wanted to let the board know that this is a topic for discussion. And a letter has been formally submitted to your board for discussions with the EDC on this matter. Next item for an update, master plan update. So the master plan is nearing completion. There's another couple of months or so left on this project. Currently, we're in the final phase where the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission is putting together final edits. Those edits will be distributed to the Master Plan Steering Committee, which also meets monthly, has been doing excellent work over the last, almost two years. After those comments, after the final edits have been added, the document will then be distributed to boards and commissions and the community at large for a comment period. After the comment period, those comments will be brought into the document and brought back to the Master Plan Steering Committee so that they are aware of what the comments were and maybe, if need be, direct more edits or not. If no more edits are directed, then it would go to the planning board for final approval. We're looking at maybe two months left on that project. Now, after the master plan is finished and approved by the planning board, the next step would be Master Plan Implementation Committee. Implementation Committee is obviously very important because the document is not of any value if it's not being used. The master plan does have some pages and some description on who should be part of the Implementation Committee and how it should be formed. We would expect that, probably to be a Select Board-appointed committee. Also, as part of that, we're going to request that the Central Mass and your board not just create an Implementation Committee to implement the recommendations of the master. to implement the recommendations of the master plan, but to also implement the recommendations of the Town Center Study. I think we're at the point where the studies are done, will be done. Now it's time to implement. So there's plenty of things to implement. There'll be several recommendations across the organization and across the various disciplines, from land use to transportation to economic development. And that's pretty much what I had for now. There are obviously other things that the office is working on and has worked on over the last several years. But I think those are some of the high notes. If there's any questions or comments, we'd be glad to take them at this point.
Chief, Chair? Thank you, David. I appreciate it. As far as Harmony Place is concerned, in time, we're going to generate a lot of revenue from them. What do you see as the build-out timeframe according to them and you? In other words, how many houses can we expect? Is there a restriction on it? Are they open-ended? How did that contract evolve so we can look at, okay, maybe in a year, we'll have 100,000 or 150,000 coming in?
Right, so this is broken up into three phases. The first phase, and perhaps Mike, if that's Mike Sullivan out there, might want to add to this. The first phase is about 44 units. And then the other phases, we'll divide up the rest of the work. So we're looking for, I believe, the total work. If everything goes well, if the market is strong, if materials are available, if labor is available, we're looking at about a five-to-six-year total project.
Okay.
So I think the town would start to see real revenue as soon as those houses, as soon as they're built, they're going to sell them. I think they've already probably pre-sold many of those.
Yeah, I wouldn't doubt.
So it's hard to actually put an exact time to it, but it should be very soon, probably within a year. Once you see houses going up, you know that they're sold.
Okay, so sooner rather than later, we should start to see some revenue coming in, based on the plan that they had put with you.
That's correct. And also, you'll see revenue from the improvement to the assessed valuation of the property and also for the dwellings. You'll also see short-term revenue on the permit side because all those permits add up to a fair amount. I think we're talking about $100,000 of total permit fees for the life of the project, which is a conservative estimate.
Okay, okay, thank you. Question number two. How does the EDIC and the RDIC, what's the difference between those two?
The Economic Development Commission, EDC, is an Economic Development Commission. Their task, as appointed by this board several years ago, with a charge that this board put into place for that group is to pretty much look at economic development in general terms across the town in terms of business retention, grant writing for various grants that would benefit economic development functions, business outreach, retention, having, having new businesses come in, make a presentation, having speakers come in. It's more of a generalized approach to economic development. The RDIC, Rutland Development Industrial Commission, is more specific. Their main charge is to work on the heights, to dispose of land related to the heights, and also to work with the town administration to generate an RFP and do the other outreach that's part of disposing of that land. I realize that there was some prior discussion that the RDIC may have been the Economic Development Commission or may have had the ability to do that. But those decisions were made at, were made before planning staff got involved to support the EDC.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. George, appreciate it.
Any more questions? If I may, Dave, thank you.
There's one more, I'm sorry. But after your question.
No, go for it.
I don't think I, I must have overlooked this one. And I apologize for that. This is, yes, there it is. So as the town, as you folks recall, and the folks in town recall, three years plus ago, the Rate Development Limitation Bylaw was passed at a town meeting. The purpose of that bylaw was to put a cap on the number of building permits that could be granted per year. Now, I'm bringing this issue, I'm, I'm talking about this issue now because the bylaw expires in 2024. It could possibly be renewed for another period of time, for no more than one more period of five years. As far as I understand it, and this predates me coming on board, the purpose was to let the town develop its planning process and try to, try to get a handle on how to address growth. So this will be coming up for renewal in 2024. One of the provisions falls to the town administrator, and that is to determine the effectiveness of it. So I realize that the Growth Management Bylaw had not been active, but I just put this out to you that this will be on the table and action will be needed for next town meeting on this matter. Just so folks are aware of that. Sorry to interrupt.
Mr. Chair, Dave, you said the five years. We can't do it for more than another five years? The state says that?
So this is really case law-driven. So growth management bylaws are slightly controversial if they are overly restrictive. So the 36 number was determined as, as a number that's not wildly out of line with the town's historical average number of building permits being issued. So the town is issuing about 55 to 60 historically. So 36 was a slight pullback. It was not something that the courts was really seen to have a big issue with. If you dropped it down to 10, that's a bigger gap compared to your average number of the 55 to 60. The growth management bylaws have had, have been shown to be valid if they are limited in nature for the purpose of letting the town have time to develop its planning program. Now, when this first went into effect, there was no master plan. There's no Economic Development Commission. We're just building, we're just building the planning department from the ground up. So now these things are in place. That's going to change the dynamic somewhat. So the courts would indicate that time to put your planning program into, into place. Now, hearing what the schools have to say about 78 new students not being an anomaly but being more typical, that could be further justification for the five-year extension. But beyond that, I think maybe with data-driven analysis and fiscal tools to handle growth, that your five years may be, you know, may be it. And within that, if there's more things to do to try to manage growth in a more rational manner, I think that's what the expectation would be. Anything beyond it, if it's a permanent thing, the courts really don't look favorably on it. It was meant to be temporary and short-term in nature.
Thank you.
How many permits for home, for housing is already on the books? Do you know?
For this current year?
No, period, total, yeah. Or you could say this current?
For this current year, because you'd have to answer it that way because it's per year. It's a maximum of 36 building permits per year for projects that are not exempt. Now, the subdivisions that were previously approved in 2005, those are exempt and those don't count. So your real number is actually greater than 36.
Yeah, so, I mean, would it be like 300, 200? If the builders wanted to just go out and build, how many homes could be built with the permits already issued?
So if there was no growth management bylaw?
Yeah, no, just before the bylaw came into place, how many? I mean, there were a lot of permits. Some of the homes probably didn't get built, I'm assuming. So there are homes out there that could be built because permits have already been issued.
I guess what I would say to that is if the growth management bylaw was not in place, there were some years where the town was seeing 70 building permits for new single-family dwellings per year, if it was not in place. Even with it being in place, the town's still seeing 50 because it's the 36, which have been issued. The town has been issuing all, the entire allotment, plus the ones that are exempt, so it's still 50.
Yeah.
So it's still a very high number compared to the surrounding communities, with the exception of Holden. This is a very serious, serious amount of permits.
People want to come here.
And I think for anybody that's listening and for new members on the board, the previous information from the growth management study and all the work with CMR PC and everything is available on the planning website. And that has some of the, the data behind the historical numbers. So I think in the building boom back in the early 2000s, there were over 100 building permits a year. And then it kind of leveled out. But now I think what we're starting to see is the continuation of the new home construction and also families' housing turnover from that generational piece, so, yeah. And if I may, Dave, thank you so much. I know it's your last week, and I appreciate all the work that you've done for town. Coming into a new position is never easy. I think our town administrators can attest to that. So I appreciate all the work that you've done, and I've enjoyed working with you on the various projects. So big shoes to fill.
Good luck.
Thank you, good luck.
I appreciate you saying that, thank you very much.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the town administrator update.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Congratulations to the, to the new members of the board. Look forward to working with all of you. So we, I just want to actually start off by also thanking voters who attended town meeting and the town election and ultimately for the support of the proposed fiscal year 2024 budget. I can say, last Tuesday was a great day for town staff. A lot of, a lot of smiles and, and happy faces and just overall sentiment from, from town staff. We're looking forward to demonstrating the value of this investment and want to thank the confidence of the voters in supporting this budget. I want to formally announce that the 2022 Annual Town Report is available. Want to thank town departments and boards and commissions for their involvement in this process, and also want to give a special thanks to Tamika Murphy for her coordination efforts on this, on this project. She did a great job. It's available online. There's also some printed copies in Town Hall. It's in color. It's about 128 pages of some great content. So feel free to stop by and grab a copy or, again, access it online.
Tamika, will you be autographing each copy, please?
On a communications front, we are also trying to ramp up our online presence. We established a Twitter and Instagram page. The social media handles are @rutlandma.gov. So if you go on our website, but also kind of check our other social media pages, we'll formally do a kind of a promotional campaign for our social media. We also already do have a Facebook presence, so looking to take advantage of all the social media venues. But we're posting a lot of content on there already. Just want to announce that formally tonight. We, thanks to the fiscal year 2024 budget, we will begin over the next few weeks establishing a staffing and recruitment plan for some of those restored positions in town departments and some new positions that are also funded in the budget. So we'll beginning, we'll be beginning that recruitment over the next couple of weeks. But also, on a future board agenda, we'll be discussing a proposed policy for this process. Right now, there is no hiring procedure that's set forth in forms, in terms of a policy. So we'll be presenting a draft policy for this board to review and then eventually to implement before we begin formally hiring folks. Also, wanted to just remind you that we did send some correspondence to the board that was sent from the Waukesha-area town administrators and town manager with respect to requesting the regional school committee's usage of excess and deficiency, which was recently certified by the state, just under 1.5 million dollars. So this is essentially their free cash. So there's, it was a request from the superintendent of schools for the town administrators to send this correspondence to the school committee for them to formally utilize some of those funds to offset our educational assessments. We're also hoping that regional school transportation aid comes in stronger, which will also hopefully be used to offset our assessments as well. Also, just wanted to let the board know that I was, it was my second day at work. I was contacted, I thought it was a, a sales call, which it was, but it was a sales call that didn't cost us anything, which is great. There's a company called Business View Magazine that is interested in developing an economic development profile of the town of Rutland. Looked into the company a little bit. They've done similar profiles of some other communities in Massachusetts, the Cave Road, Drakett, there's several of them that they've done. It's a beautiful, four- or five-page profile where they interview town staff, elected boards, appointed boards, economic development planners, things like that. And it turns out to be a really great economic development profile and tool for cities and towns. So we just began those conversations and hoping to work with this company. The great thing is, is they're developing it on their own. Doesn't cost the town anything. But ultimately, it's our tool that we can use to promote the town of Rutland and our business interests and opportunities. And that is it. Happy to take any questions if the board has anything.
Does anybody have any questions for Austin?
I, I do have a question. With regards to the school committee and the excess funds, is, how would that, the school committee has to decide whether to essentially reimburse any of the towns, any of that excess?
So the school committee would make a formal vote to utilize a portion or all, it's really up to them, of that excess and deficiency, and essentially, it would just offset. So at the town meeting, the town of Rutland formally voted to for the full assessment.
Yep.
So if the school committee makes the vote, there would be a certain percentage that would come off of our assessment if they do make that vote, so.
Okay.
So they do have ultimate authority and control of the excess and deficiency fund. But again, this was a request from the superintendent in the spirit of recognizing that the assessments came in higher than even they were anticipating. So utilizing this as a tool to offset some of our educational assessment. And what that will do for us is, we'll see that on the backend of fiscal year 24 in the form of free cash.
Okay, and do they have any, any reason not to pursue that?
If I were a school business administrator, I may say that our excess and deficiency fund is, is low considering the amount of money that we spend on an annual basis, about $100 million. 1.5 million is, is very low. They're allowed to go up to 5% of their annual operating budget. And they're, they're not really close to that right now. I have a feeling, though, and that, again, because this has been a tight budget season for all cities and towns, to give you reference, all five town administrators signed on to this letter in support of this. And this was a request of the school administration as, as well, so. Ultimately, they're an elected body that is, they have the will to do whatever they please, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
I would like to make a comment. And I think that in the past years, we haven't seen this kind of support, transparency, and helping the schools and helping individual towns out, so. For me, I think it is a step in the right direction for us working more closely in a transparency way with the school. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that that's happening.
One quick thought. I appreciated his comments during the meetings with the people on Sunday afternoons. It was nice, number one, that he came. And number two, his comments were straightforward and right there.
Thank you, Austin. So we will move on to new business. Our first order of new business is the ratification of appointments following annual town meeting of the finance committee. Finance committee is appointed by our moderator, and the board is responsible for the ratification of those appointments. So I'll be looking for a motion for the ratification of Darren Ross and Karen Norwalk to fin-
So that's a motion to approve, is that what it is? Or just?
Ratify.
Just ratify it, okay. I'll make a motion to ratify the appointments following annual town meeting of Darren Ross and Karen Norwalk.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion or, for the public, they're three-year appointments? I think Karen, is that, they're both three-year appointments?
And you wanted this, right, Karen? You wanted to be on the finance committee?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I think that they were appointed with, with consideration, so.
Okay. Sekman, aye. You call it?
Yeah, yeah. Ledger, aye.
Yalvin, aye.
Waitman, aye, with appreciation, thank you.
Waitman, aye, with appreciation. Thank you.
Moving on, we have some interdepartmental transfer requests that are included in our packet. These are from DPW Waste Disposal in the Select Board. These are fairly common at the end of, towards the end of the fiscal year as we try to close out any accounts that may have been underfunded or overspent with line items that weren't fully spent or needed to be fully spent. So I think we usually do read the amount requested, then transferred from and the account number, and transferred to that account number. And then we usually add in the rationale, which is in the little box below. Is that correct, Tamika?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the...
So I think we have to do them all individually?
Okay.
Yeah. So it'll be the amount requested.
Transferred amount requested?
Yes.
Yeah. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the $16,600 transferred from account 001-945-5740-000 liability insurance to account 001-135-520-000, the town audit purchased services.
Would you, 5210 or 52?
Did I say it wrong? 001-135-5210-000, town audit purchased services. Thank you.
And just, I usually...
Which would leave...
Oh, another rationale.
Right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, the amount requested is to cover the funds needed for our FY '22 financial audit that is already underway.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there discussion, questions, comments? Okay. We'll take a vote. Harry?
Second, aye.
Matt's an aye.
Ledger, aye.
Yalvin, aye.
Waitman, aye.
Tamika gets back in. Sorry.
preemptively, as you guys go along, there's going to be a few of them that you're going to see all going to the waste disposal line item. So you're going to see the same explanation on those, just so you know.
Yep.
Wait, do we have to, can we take that lump sum and reference the sheets or do we have to do each one individually?
I would do each one individually because they're going, they're coming from different accounts. Yeah.
Okay.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve $681.27 to be transferred from account 001-129-5200-000, the town administrator purchased services transferred into account 001-195-5200-000, town report purchased services. Due to the staffing changes last year, the annual town report did not get printed until after July 1st. So the FY '23 budget has already been expended for this purpose. As such, I am seeking to transfer the funds from this year's report to the TA purchase services line to the town report line item so that we can accurately track the expenditure. The requested amount includes an additional $1.22 to bring the balance back to zero.
Is there a second? I'll second. Okay. Questions, comments? Nope. All right, Harry?
Vote second, aye.
Matt's an aye.
Ledger, aye.
Yalvin, aye.
Waitman, aye.
I would like to make a motion to approve the amount of $10,000 to be transferred from account 001-422-5200-000 to the general, or from the general highway to be transferred into account 001-430-5400-000 into the machinery...
Machinery maintenance.
Machinery maintenance account. To purchase repair parts to highway equipment needed before the start of the next fiscal year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Questions, comments, concerns? I'll take a vote. Harry?
Second, aye.
Matt's an aye.
Ledger, aye.
Yalvin, aye.
Waitman, aye.
I would like to make a motion to approve $1,156 to be transferred from account 001-122-5110-000, the select board salaries, to be transferred into account 001-433-5200-000, waste disposal purchased services. In late March, we received the annual assessment from Waukesha Earth Day Recycling Center in the amount of $5,815.37. Unfortunately, it was not properly budgeted for, properly budgeted for in FY '23, so we temporarily paid it from the waste disposal line item to ensure the invoice was paid on time. However, that nearly depleted the line item and DPW has additional invoices to pay in FY '23. So we are taking overages from various line items to return the funds.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Questions, comments, concerns?
Comments? Do we receive a, this item is our annual assessment. Does it give us a breakdown of how many, well, the towns that are in it and what percentage or portion of that that they do is ours? I mean, do they give us a profit loss? Do they give us anything other than just a number that says, here's what you got to pay?
Just give us the number that says, here's what you got to pay. And I just wanted to add, we did budget for this in FY '24.
And I think, Harry, that's a really good question. I think the past few years, we've been without a municipal liaison or representative to the Waukesha Earth Day. So I think in the past, there's at least been conversations around what's going into that makeup, whether the town agrees with the number or not. But I think that that's something that we kind of feel had effect now that there hasn't been the past couple of years.
I mean, the reason I ask questions, I go there and I pay fees to drop my stuff off. So for the fees that we pay, and this is what they collect, and then this is what they tell us we owe, well, what's the difference in there? I mean, is it really what we owe?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just, you know, I owe a financial duty to the town to ask the question, to see if that's really what we owe. And that's just a bill we get with no explanation.
That is great.
Okay.
Definitely an area that we need to look into for sure. Thank you. So anybody else? All right. We'll take a vote.
Yep. Second, aye.
Matt's an aye.
Waitman, aye. Go ahead.
Oh, can I have a question?
Ledger, aye.
Yalvin, aye.
Waitman, aye.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve $2,000 to be transferred from account 001-122-5200-000, select board purchase services into, transferred into account 001-433-5200-000, waste disposal purchased services. In late March, we received the annual assessment from Waukesha Earth Day Rec...
Oh, Tom, not to interrupt you. That's the one that...
Oh, it's on board. Okay.
Don't bother.
Thank God. That was a long...
I feel see that two more times after this.
I got dizzy after that last one.
So we have a motion?
Second.
Second? Any, it's the same consideration, so. Okay. I'll take a vote.
Second, aye.
Matt's an aye.
Ledger, aye.
Yalvin, aye.
Waitman, aye.
I think these next few are the same rationale, so.
There's two more.
So just the numbers, not the rationale? Okay. Sounds good. I'd like to make a motion to approve the request $1,253.67 to be transferred from account 001-155-5850-021, network E permitting services, to be transferred into account 001-433-5200-000, waste disposal purchased services.
Second.
I mean, all right, Harry, we'll start.
Wait, we're ready for a second?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. No, that's good.
Okay.
Harry, second?
Ready for vote?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Second, aye.
Matt's an aye.
Ledger, aye.
Yalvin, aye.
Waitman, aye.
All right. Make a motion to approve $1,405.70 to be transferred from account 001-421-5200-000, highway administration P services, to be transferred into account 001-433-5200-000, waste disposal purchased services.
Is there a second?
Second.
And no comments, questions, concerns? I'll take a vote. Harry, do you want to start?
Second, aye.
Matt's an aye.
Ledger, aye.
Yalvin, aye.
Waitman, aye.
So these next ones, you'll need to read the description.
What's that?
You'll need to read the...
Read it again. Yep, yep. Make a motion to accept 12, or, yeah, to approve $12,000 to be transferred from account 601-450-5200-000, water purchased services to be transferred into account 601-450-5130-000. What's that? Water OT and standby. Plant capacity down from 1.5, what is this, MGD?
Million gallons per day, I think.
Per day to 1.0 million gallons per day due to the, I can't read it.
A filter failure?
A filter, yes. A filter failure, repairs planned, more time needed to produce daily supply, OT hours more than planned.
Does this receive a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns?
Comment on this. I wish I had some, I wish I had somebody here. Joe was here. I guess when I look at this, I have no problem with money, but I do have a problem with us going down a half a million, half a million gallons a day that we've taken the plant offline, so to speak. Is there anybody here that can answer to that?
I don't know for sure. I don't know, Gary or Austin, if you can, but I think it says here that it was due to a failure, a filter failure, so they had to come down till the repair was done.
Right, but...
So it took longer to make the water.
My concern is, they normally change filters. They have a time schedule which they change filters. I've been down there. I've seen the process and everything. So my question, why did we get to a filter failure? If it was an accident, that's one thing. If we waited too long, was it because we didn't have enough personnel there? We didn't have enough time? That kind of stuff. That would be my concern. That's all. Just a comment.
Yalvin, I don't know, Austin or Gary, if you have any?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't have any information. I can certainly get that for you, but I'll take those comments and make sure we figure that out.
Gary, were you here when this?
Yeah, I was. It's based on the age of the plant. That was certainly not anticipated because they are regularly maintained. The sediment has changed. They were all cleaned, blasted. Unfortunately, it's luck of the draw. The age of the plant, age of the filter was a filter failure.
Okay. That was it.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. I will take a vote.
Second, aye.
Matt's an aye.
Ledger, aye.
Yalvin, aye.
Waitman, aye.
All right. Make a motion to approve $20,000 to be transferred from account 001-141-5200-000, assessor purchased services, to be transferred into account 001-141-5120-000, admin assessor salary. Assessor salary no longer part of purchased services.
Is there a second? I'll second. Questions, comments, concerns?
Yalvin, a question? Through the chair, please. The appropriation that we have in the balance is 29,733, 29,000. We're only taking 20,000 out. Does that 9,000 be expected to be used by the end of the year or is that going to be transferred over as well to the assessor salary? Can we help?
It shouldn't be transferred to the assessor salary. Harry, actually, when Amy came on board from RRG, there was a cost savings that, I don't remember, there was 94,000 or something like that, that we were paying RRG and Amy services. It was a cost reduction to have Amy come and work for the town of Rutland as well as an administrative assistant, which was reduced hours to what we've had before because Amy was going to full time.
Okay. So we actually saved money in this process. Okay. Good to know.
Thank you, Harry. All right. I'll take a vote. Harry?
Second, aye.
Matt's an aye.
Ledger, aye.
Yalvin, aye.
Waitman, aye.
Make a motion to approve $224.59 to be transferred from account 001-210-5700-000, police, other charges, to be transferred into account 001-210-5400-000, police supplies. Accidentally submitted an invoice to wrong account number. Should have been charged to 5700.
Does this receive a second?
I'll second.
Questions, comments, concerns?
Not on this one. I'm good.
Then I will take a vote.
Second, aye.
Matt's an aye.
Ledger, aye.
Yalvin, aye.
Waitman, aye.
Before we continue, I'm going to have a personal commitment that I need to be out for, unfortunately. So I'm going to try to hop on Zoom as best as I can, but I will turn the chair over to the vice chair because I can't chair remotely.
All right.
If you guys leave the documents up for signing, I can sign tomorrow morning. Thank you.
That's it for all the transfer requests, right? That's all we had?
Yep.
Okay. So next we'll move on to request for a letter of support for the Waukesha School Committee Resolution Mass Building Authority.
Mr. Chair, I can just speak a little bit on this. So this was a request received by the Regional School Committee, sent to the town administration, town manager. The Mass School Building Authority operates an accelerated facility building repair program. It's essentially a short-term grant slash loan program for regional school district, well, not just regional, all school districts that take advantage of for repairs. And a lot of times, these projects are funding boiler replacements, window replacements, roof repairs. Due to the pandemic and inflation costs, the authority paused the program. It's the request of the school district to send a letter of support to the building authority to restart this program. You'll see in the following pages, there's a resolution, if you will, from the school committee. So the school committee is just asking for a letter of support from the select board and the town of Rutland in support of this resolution.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve the letter. What are we looking for here?
65.
Waukesha Regional School Committee Resolution Regarding Mass Building Authority.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion?
The letter was signed by Sherri Haber. Which town is she from? Do we know?
Rutland.
She's Rutland.
Rutland?
Yep.
I believe so.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
No other discussion for me.
Vote. Take a vote.
Second, aye.
Matt's an aye.
Ledger, aye.
Yalvin, aye.
Waitman, aye. I'm still here.
Oh, okay.
I'm heading out now.
Thanks, Leah.
All right. We'll move on to 66. General Bylaw Amendments Update from Peter Crane.
Ms. Director and Chair, if you wish, you can take the next issue since it's another appointment thing because mine will be quite a bit longer than that.
All right. Does anybody have a problem with us moving on to 67?
I'm fine.
All right. Move on to 67. Upper Blackstone Board of Directors, be a new appointment to Board of Directors due to DPW Director departure.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Yes, so the Director Buckley was previously the board's appointment to the Upper Blackstone Board of Directors. This is a responsibility typically of the Public Works Director or associated positions with respect to our membership for essentially wastewater treatment, transportation. I am requesting the board consider appointing the town administrator to this board, which would allow for an opportunity for me to also designate someone to attend in my place. It is my intention to designate the future Public Works Director to this position, but also if there was no interest from that director, I would seek someone with a little bit more knowledge, perhaps an engineering degree of some sorts, to be able to attend on my behalf. But for right now, I do feel confident attending this board. I've served as a member of similar boards in my previous experiences, but also I do believe that we would have a qualified and capable Public Works Director that could attend. So I think the appointment would be town administrator or his designee for this board.
Is this a change in a permanent change or temporary change?
This would be a three-year appointment.
Okay. So for now, for three years, you would be willing to do this?
Correct.
Okay.
If I don't designate someone before then.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. This is very similar, but done on some other regional boards and committees. Oftentimes, town administrator, town manager, city manager, or Public Works Director could also designate someone to attend in their place if they can't attend for a particular reason. So this wouldn't be uncommon practice in the industry, it just may be a little different than what this board has done before.
I don't know what that is, that you would do, but I congratulate you on doing it and adding it to your job, so.
So, any other discussion? We get a motion to designate the town administrator or designee?
May I make an amendment to the motion? To designate Town Administrator Austin Saginawitz versus, God forbid, you leave? Does that matter?
No, I mean, so I think appointing the position, but if you want to put my name in there, that's fine. I am the town administrator right now.
Okay. Okay.
And I don't plan on going anywhere.
Okay. All right, then I'll second.
Do we have to make a motion on the change, the amendment first?
Or I can withdraw. I can withdraw.
Nobody motioned yet.
Nobody technically made the motion, you just asked for one, and then she made it with the amendment, so it really isn't an amendment.
Okay.
So the motion's, yeah, okay.
So someone has to second.
Okay.
Motion's made, seconded. Vote? Sec, man, I.
Mattson, I.
Ledger, I.
Galvin, I.
Waitman, I.
You ready?
I'm ready.
At this time, we will go back to 66. General Bylaw Amendments Update from Peter Crane.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Peter Crane, and I'm coming to you as the Chair of the Ad Hoc Bylaw Committee to discuss Rutland's general bylaws. Now, there are two kinds of bylaws in town. There's zoning bylaws, which deals with land use, how big a lot is allowed to be, and what sort of things are allowed to do on those lots. That is entirely under the purview of the Planning Board. Small asterisk, has to be adopted at town meeting, but the Planning Board's really in charge of it. General bylaws cover everything else. Let's begin. So we're gonna talk a little bit about bylaw history, we're gonna talk about the committee that we have, the status where we are, and how we're gonna move forward, and for goodness' sake, finish one day. Rutland was formed in what year? The town? Come on, folks.
1713. 1722.
How about 1722?
Because we just had a tricentennial, for goodness sake.
Something happened in 1713.
Yes, there was a founding, but that's not the same as actually the incorporation of the town.
Oh, is it a trick question?
Yes, of course it is, because the numbers that are right there lie. But they tell the truth. Anyway, until 1895, the town had zero bylaws. It was done, everything that was done was common practice, and one hopes in conformance with the Massachusetts general laws. In 1904, the town passed two bylaws. Government structure and processes were things like town meeting, and then there is the, what I call the punitive bylaw, public decency posting bills, and of course, the hot-button issue of the day, frightening horses. It stayed that way until 1940, when a town meeting, a committee was formed to look at establishing a set of bylaws for the town. This is the first organized, actual attempt to create a body of bylaws for the town, and that was adopted in 1941 town meeting. Ever since then, the town has added bylaws based on what things happen and other external forces. Situation that occurred was in towns, not Rutland, but in other towns, people were taking loom and bringing it to Boston, selling it for great money. Many towns, including Rutland, passed an earth removal bylaw to prevent that from happening. Mass general law has changed significantly, and sometimes those enable the town to pass bylaws. So things happen from time to time. At no point do you see that there has been an effort to look at the body of bylaws in total and to figure out what to do with it and to organize it. We currently have 35 bylaws on the books. Most recently amended was not the most commonly, the revolving funds at this last town meeting. We should spend a little time talking about not just what the committee's doing and what you do, but the entire set of actions necessary for a bylaw to become enacted. It starts with somebody proposing something, frequently a board or an department in the town. When DPW suggested the stormwater bylaw, for reasons outside of, caused by external influences, I should say, that's one way to do it. The Select Board has for years demanded that every bylaw that comes from a town body passes through legal review of town council. There are also citizen petitions, it doesn't happen very often, but it does happen, those don't go through any, well, go through minimal legal review, and you're obligated to place those motions. After the proposition, Select Board place a warrant article. Now, this is, of course, the everything goes right path. If anything along here doesn't happen, the whole process stops. So you place it on the warrant, town meeting votes to adopt. Then things get interesting, because we don't have a bylaw yet. Town clerk has 30 days to put together a package for the Attorney General's Office. The Attorney General's Office reviews every single bylaw change. And they have three months to do that. And they're taking three months to do it. I can't wait to see how long it takes them to get through our complete body of bylaws. I wish them luck, just because of the volume of things they have to consider. Then, AG's office sends a note to the town clerk, which can be, everything's fine, we have no comments, that doesn't happen very often. We have a few comments, but we accept your bylaw. We have these comments, and we are striking these sections of your bylaw. We completely reject your bylaw. Those are the four actions that the Attorney General's Office can take. Assuming that it's any of the, some part of it was accepted, the town clerk posts the bylaw. And it is that point, more than four months after town meeting, that the bylaw becomes effective. In February, I believe, we got the approval for all the bylaw changes from November. The bylaw change that was put through implicitly through one of the motions at May's town meeting won't take effect until July. So that's how it happens. The committee itself currently has five members, we in the past had seven. In no particular order, we have a surveyor, a former attorney, the Chair of the Planning Board, the town clerk, and a software engineer. A pretty broad group of experience and perspectives. And the former members, another attorney, and the person who is now, I believe, our veteran's agent.
Yes.
Again, broad group. They resigned for a variety of reasons. The committee was initially formed in 2017. We were charged with the codification, just to say to have a common look and feel to all the bylaws. And also, we were to create a bylaw to create a permanent bylaw committee, not an ad hoc bylaw committee. Basically, we created a committee to replace us, which was adopted at 2019 annual town meeting. This is all supposed to be done for annual town meeting 2019. Since we just passed the 2023 annual town meeting, you know it's not done. Why? Oh, did we find problems? We find some of our bylaws that directly conflict with mass general law. That's a bad place to be. How did they get past original AG review? I can't answer that question. But they have, but if we try to amend anything and pass it to the AG's office, the AG's office is gonna strike whole portions or complete bylaws. In addition to the mass general law conflicts, mass general law has changed, and there are things that we need to change in our bylaws to adapt to the changes in MGL. In addition, there are some implicit changes because of, it's generally called case law. Somebody sues somebody because of a bylaw. And the effect of that suit can change everybody's bylaw. A perfect example, the earth removal bylaw has conditions in it that courts have said, you may not have this condition in your bylaw. And the last time we amended our earth removal bylaw, we didn't touch any of those sections, we touched very few words. The AG's office noted that we have improper issues, and we really ought to have, deal with counsel for this. In addition, there's never been an organization. There's sort of presented in the order they were passed, sort of. Neither has there been a consistent structure or style. This is our current set of bylaws, and if you flick through it, you say, nothing, no two pages look alike. That's an exaggeration, but it's surprisingly close to true. When town council mocks our body of bylaws privately to me, we know we have to change things. And also, very interestingly, is the fact that the website looks different from this. We're trying to fix all of that. Because of these very serious problems, in, I believe, January 2019, we asked the Select Board then to update our charge. This is my statement of our charge. It's not the formal charge, I haven't found our formal charge in a long time, I'm sure it's somewhere, but this is my statement of it. First part is very much like it was before, to make a consistent format and presentation of the entire body of Rutland's general bylaws. Then we add the new things, modernize the content based on what's happened to mass general law, what's happened to case law, and what we do in town. Because how we act should be reflected in our bylaws. We are to prepare the body for approval at future town meeting and hold public information sessions so that the public knows what we're doing. This is our review process. We work every Tuesday at 1:00. Since 2017, we work and we come up with a series of proposed amendments to bylaws. We pass that off, I call this department, it's to somebody who has authority. DPW has authority in some, police, fire, and the Select Board have specific review requirements for this. Now, previous iterations of the Select Board have wanted to review every single bylaw because you're responsible for putting them on the warrant. So there's a step after the department, the group, the board, whoever, reviews. Changes are possible, we iterate over that, go to Select Board, same thing will happen. Then we go to legal review. Town Council. Then, we hold our public information session to say what's going on, and again, the possibility exists that something could come out that causes us to go back to the beginning of the review process. Finally, it all goes to town meeting. Questions about the process? No, there's one truth. This process can get squished the closer we get to town meeting. We have had legal review and public information sessions at basically the same time. You know, we won't go until this, until the Select Board review is done, but sometimes we have legal review and public information at the same time because we're out of time. A public information session as a rule is two hours each. We cover about a chapter an hour. That's, by the way, for both Select Board review and for public information sessions. Where are we? Well, let's start with the very first thing we did, organization. We created eight chapters of bylaws. Every bylaw fits into one of these, including our least favorite, other matters, because there just has to be a bucket for things that don't live anywhere else. Some bylaws fit in multiple, conceptually fit in multiple chapters. I picked on Finance Committee enough, so CIPC could, is, a multi-member body, but deals with financial affairs. We ended up, you know, we make decisions, and our decision basically is, the bylaw belongs based on what it does not, how they're formed, or what they're composed of. News, look, and feel to every bylaw. Every bylaw now has a purpose. Some purposes have in the past been very flowery, we're looking to protect the this and stop the that, and we're getting rid of all the flowery language, and really, it's just what does the bylaw do? That is its purpose. Authority, always section two. What statute gives us permission to write this bylaw? This particular one covers, has two. General laws, Chapter 40, Section 21, which you'll see a lot in the early bylaws, because Chapter 40, Section 21 deals with general government. And the other one you'll see a lot is Article 89 of the Massachusetts Constitution, which is the Home Rule Amendment. That article basically says you can write any bylaw that doesn't conflict with mass general law. So that is the fallback authority if we have no other in statute. Some bylaws, like this one, have definitions. This being the general provisions actually is definitions for all the bylaws, but many bylaws have specific definitions for specific terms. When there are definitions, they will be section three. And then starts the body of the meat of the bylaw, if you will. If there is no section three, then section three starts the meat. The thing you don't see here, because it's just too long, it is editorial text, but it's being included in every bylaw. Let me pick a really good one. Ah, nah, that's the one I wanted. We have the complete history of every bylaw. We will, we don't actually have every single one done yet. This is the complete history of the Select Board bylaw, starting in 1941, when it was passed. In every amendment, we note everything, because people want to look at it. You might notice that this last one is the longest one of the bunch, that's because we restructured a lot, and we moved a lot of things, and so, every bylaw, whenever we do this, they're going to have a long section of history at the end.
Peter, can I stop you for a second?
Please.
Those bylaws that you're showing us, have they been approved by the state yet, or are they just a format?
They haven't made it to town meeting yet.
Okay, so they're...
This is all proposed amendments.
Gotcha, okay.
I may have glossed over this a little too quickly. Editorial text is never part of the bylaw, and history is editorial text. Footnotes are editorial text, they are not part of the bylaw. They're there to clarify, but the bylaw is the body, the main body of the bylaw itself. Wordsmithing is very important sometimes, especially when lawyers are involved. No offense to lawyers, you need to be precise, I get it. There are substantive changes, and the word that we have chosen to use, there are consequential changes. Every change that's not a clear typographical error, or a renumbering of a section, is a substantive change. If you have non-substantive changes, you don't have to have them approved at town meeting, you don't need to go through full review with the AGs, all of that. Because typographical errors happen. But you change a word because you like this word better than that word. You change punctuation. You completely change the layout of the bylaw, those are all substantive changes. But substantive changes don't always impact the effect, the scope, or the intent of the bylaw. We are terming... We are terming those things that change the intent, effect, or scope as consequential. Why do we make a difference? If you were to look at the bylaws, the proposed bylaws, if you were to look at it in what's called red line format, where you have crossed through for the things that are removed and you have text in a, and that's slightly highlighted for inserted, it would be unreadable. If you have change bars where all the changes are off to the side, it's more readable, but trying to track each change is a difficult task and doesn't actually add value because it's not changing anything consequential to the bylaw. Virtually every change we've made to the bylaws is substantive definitionally, but only some of them are consequential. We have a separate document that lists for each bylaw its consequential changes. Where are we? Chapters one through six. I'd like to say completely through, except that we now, because of legal review, we need to go back, especially the ones about select board and town administrator and town meeting, that we need to go back and have re-review with you folks. But legal's done, if we don't make any more changes, we're locked. We have six more bylaws ready for the process. I'm going to go backwards on this list. Strategy energy code has already been reviewed by the building inspector. Right to farm has already been reviewed by agricultural commission. Emergency entry systems used to be master key something, which is how firefighters get into a building when it's on fire, has been renamed to emergency entry systems, has already been reviewed by the fire chief. Door-to-door solicitations already been reviewed by the police chief. Water use restrictions had been sent to the DPW superintendent slash director some time ago, I have heard nothing back, and we just finished stormwater. I don't know who to have reviewed that for, as what we call department review. We need a subject matter expert in order to read them to say, this is good or not good, especially for this town. But we could start review with you on the rest of these right away. There are four bylaws waiting to be updated. The earth removal bylaw is being updated by the earthworks board, there's a whole set of changes they're doing to that. Animal control, we're in the process of doing right now. Fingerprint-based background checks will come, it's not a very long bylaw, probably won't take very long. Signs however, is 16 pages of hell, and it reads like a freaking zoning bylaw, which I hate. We have a lot of work to do on signs. And there might be others coming along. We know conservation commission is working on Rutland's protection. Joe Buckley, before he left, you know, a year ago had mentioned there could be two more stormwater bylaws. And then there's this recall of elected officials which has come up recently. That won't be a bylaw, because it can't be a bylaw. It can only be done by special legislation. But the bylaw committee is going to work with town council to craft some, what we believe to be reasonable edges to it. And then we'll put it forward to, for you folks to decide if it makes sense to move forward. Because it's special legislation, we have to go to town meeting, get approval from town meeting, so that you can write the letter, so that our representative and senator can submit the law. I'm not going to talk about the hell that is special legislation, other than to say, moving forward, we're blocked because of special legislation. The town took a couple actions, one in 1974 and one in 2007, that actually required special legislation to do, they were done solely by town meeting vote. We discovered this because of legal review of our bylaw amendments in November, hmm, a day before the warrant closed, so that we could get the article on the warrant that said, oh, we have this, what did you call it, housekeeping amendment? Which basically ratifies the town meeting vote at the state level, that's what that special legislation does. It specifically enables our select board and board of public works bylaws. By the way, you are two bodies, not one. Select board was voted to act as the board of public works. I have things to say about that, but let me just say, it gets complicated, because who has authority to appoint the superintendent of public works? The board of public works. Who has authority to sign contracts? The select board. And I haven't heard back from town council if it's legal and proper to have both boards meet at the same time because you're the same body. So it could literally be, act as the board of public works, adjourn that meeting, start the meeting with select board at the right time, waiting the 20 minutes that you too long that you have to wait because you published a meeting, and approve a contract. Enough of that, I have lots to say about that. Anyway, the problem isn't just select board and board of public works, we have an interrelated body of bylaws. What would happen? Are there conflicts if we were to pass the town administrator bylaw and not pass the new select board, the amended select board bylaw? I'm not sure. There's a lot of we're not sure about, we haven't thought about it. The good news is, the special legislation is out of committee on municipalities and regional government. There was a hearing in early May and it, they've left, it's been, what's the, they've said, yes, this is okay, let's go ahead, it's been advanced back to the senate. We don't know when it'll be done, the process to pass any law is convoluted. It takes three separate readings on three separate days unless they decide to not do that. We have expected this to take on the order of a year to pass. And since everything started this calendar year, actually in March, there are reasons, that it could go all the way into next year. But should with virtual certainty be done by May, before May next year. But we won't know until, I mean, we won't know. When, oh when, oh when will the committee be done? So I mentioned 2017 as the formation of the committee, Anita and I have been working on this for three years before that. We want to be done. The entire committee is tired and wants to be done. So when will we be done? The really glib, silly answer is, whenever you tell us to be done. We are a body of the select board. You charged us, you can discharge us. And perhaps you might want to transition to a permanent bylaw committee that you haven't posted for, gotten any applicants, or gone through any process for that. And it will almost certainly make things take longer, but that's a hummina, hummina. I believe it is possible that we, that we could be done, that the special legislation can be done by November 23, which unlocks everything that we have completed the review on. And the only one I can say for sure will not be done by November 2023 is signs. Okay, if we left one behind that stands alone, it's a standalone bylaw. So if we left one behind and we did it after, whatever, that's easy. We are concerned that passing only a portion of the bylaws, which is, again, possible, in fact, that's why that asterisk, anytime after the special legislation is passed, we actually could do it all before the special legislation is passed. We would work out a deal with the AG's office and we'd say, hey, yeah, yeah, here they all are, the town did them all, but would you hold off on your review for the select board and the board of public works and anything else that we find is interrelated with those? And the AG's office say, sure, no problem, town council says they do that, that AG's office does that all the time. And this is a large enough body to read that I can see them not having a problem delaying some of it. But this goes back to something that needs closer analysis of how the bylaws interact. Do we create conflicts in our bylaws if we don't pass them all? This is one of the reasons that I and the committee have been saying, we're going to wait till the special legislation is done. But at the end of the day, it's not up to us, it's up to you. What are we doing? We are continuing our review and updates, we are monitoring the special legislation. Every few days, I go on the website and see what's happened at the legislature with it. We are managing select board review, that box of select board review. I or someone from the committee will come before you and we'll talk about all the changes of the bylaws, consequential and not. And we will, when we get closer to town meeting, hold public information sessions about all the bylaws. But we can't do it alone, we need things from you. First, yeah, I'm going to call this the most urgent, the town council decision. Huh? Every year, you appoint town council for a year. And there was discussion amongst the previous iteration of the select board to change town I have had very good experiences with town council and I've had some very bad experiences with town council. I'm not taking a position on what you should do, but there is a side effect you should know about as part of your decision-making process. The ad hoc bylaw committee has been allocated, appropriated, a sum of money at now two different town meetings to cover legal review. So we're, this is not coming out of the general fund or the general legal fund the town administrator uses, this is our own, we pay for everything that we get done. We did not envision when we asked for money, a change to town council, because that would invariably cause re-legal review of everything that had been done to date. Interrelated bylaws means you need a continuous, a continuum of town council. We wouldn't want a different town council to read these and react to them, then read those. So I'm not saying it's wrong to change town council or bad, I'm saying there is a repercussion that we might have to go back to town meeting to get more money in order to finish the legal review. Everything is doable. So what else do we need you to do? Well, we need to start the review process. I've mentioned that there are several that have changed that are very important to you, so we need to go, we need to do a review session of at least those. But beyond that, this select board needs to decide which bylaws you want to review. I don't know that there's a huge value to reviewing unregistered motor vehicles, but if you want to, you should. It is our job of the committee to serve, and if you want to review every single one of them, fine. If any one of you wants to review any particular bylaw, fine. But if you want to skip over some, that's also okay with us. We will do public information sessions of every single bylaw, but your review, you do your review as you decide. We will soon, small asterisk, start scheduling review sessions. They have historically been held, as I said, two hours long, on off Mondays. As I say, the Mondays that you don't meet, we schedule these. Your next decision. A bit of controversy here. There are people in town who firmly, firmly, firmly vehemently believe that the only time to adopt bylaws or amend bylaws is at annual town meeting. I don't prescribe to that at all, I vehemently disagree with that opinion as strongly as the people who believe it, believe it. I know that we have had a town meeting that did nothing but adopt one zoning bylaw, that was it, that was the marijuana moratorium. We passed general and zoning bylaws any time of year, historically. So I don't see a historical precedent to limit it. The big discussion is, well, more people go to annual, of course, because that's what the budget's dealt with. A lot of budgets is also, by the way, dealt with at November, but a lot of people don't show up to that. I don't, it, why, doesn't matter. But you have to decide if you are willing, if you desire to have it only be, all this come up at annual, or does it come up, would you possibly put it on the November town meeting if we could get it all done in time? If the special legislation were done? An option that's on the table, and again, it's your decision, perhaps there should be a town meeting that just deals with bylaws. It would be special, okay, fine. That's another way to go. Those are the three primary options that I've seen. And once you decide what town meeting we're going to go to, you then need to decide, how many articles are you going to place? If you are going to do it at annual town meeting, I would propose that there is a single article that says, adopt the bylaws. Yeah, yeah, fancy words, that's what it means. And then, there'll be four hours of discussion about the bylaws at annual town meeting. The opposing side, or diametrically opposed side, is one article per bylaw. My biggest problem with that is time. How long does it take to read the warrant article, the motion, wait for discussion that doesn't happen, vote, and move on? 35 times. My actual, what I have proposed in the past is one article per chapter. There aren't that many bylaws that are, bylaw changes that are controversial. I know for sure of one, I suspect two others, but we will never know until we get to town meeting. How long does it take to discuss changing town clerk to, to an appointed position? How long do we talk about Lou Cornickioli's citizen's petition? Not unusual. Town meeting, town meeting does what town meeting does. So you need to decide when we're going to go to town meeting and how we're going to present it for warrant articles. And then we'll write the warrant articles and it'll be done. That decision has to be done because you need town council appointment before July 1. That's what makes that the most urgent. And we can start reviewing literally anytime, I would probably wait a couple weeks or even a month or so, get us out of some more of this end-of-the-year stuff that happens, and then start hard reviews. And then the other ones, the other decisions can be put off almost as long as you like. We have not been working, well, we've been in pretty much isolation because not many, nobody shows, well, very few people show up to our meetings, 2:00 on Tuesdays, but we have been regularly publishing what we're doing. Town website, nice big box, bylaws and regulations. On that, hey, the general bylaws are changing, click here for more information. And you get to this page, which is long and has a lot of information on it, including the process and the organization. And then, down here, we have a couple fairly important links that I haven't found a good way to highlight further. This one is bylaws, is the complete body of bylaws and everything else, we have more than just bylaws in the book. In one document, as opposed to one, you know, one webpage per. And this link is the link of, the list of consequential changes. Go a little further down, you find every single bylaw, organized by chapter and article number and where we are in the process. Because of what's happened, we've put everything back to re-review except for revolving funds because that was passed at town meeting. And if you go even further down, we have a table that has the old bylaw and the new bylaw. What I wanted to do is I wanted to bring up two frames side by side with the old and the new. And then you can see how impossible it is to compare them because we restructure things along the way. So each one opens a page and then... So, each one opens a page, and then you just, you have to go back and forth or align them however you want to align them to make them happen, but that's, that at least gives you the option to compare them both. That's what I thought. I apologize for not passing these out in advance, because this is the presentation, I meant to do that so you could take notes or do whatever you like with them. The last two pages are the new table of contents, so you can see exactly how we've organized I know I have just dumped a lot of information on there. Are there questions I can answer now?
I mean, oh, go ahead, you can go.
You had expressed on the screen that you were hoping to get everything done by November '23.
No, I said that it is, we believe it is feasible to get everything except signs done by November '23, yes.
Providing that...
The special legislation.
Special legislation.
Yep.
If the special legislation comes through in, say, October, do you think we can still get it done by November for town meeting?
It really all depends, the fast answer is yes, but it's more work compressed.
I worry about throwing this stuff out at the citizens of our town like a snowball coming down a hill, and just overwhelming them. So, if we can get it, if the legislature comes through soon, great. If it doesn't, I'd be very concerned of shem, ramming that through in a November election, maybe wait till next May. That's, I mean, yes, we can probably get, but that would be my concern for the citizens.
Yeah, I, until we, until we know more, it's, it's hard to plan without knowing. We could take some actions now, planning that it would happen. So we would start the public information sessions in August, which is the worst time of year to hold a meeting, but that's where we would start, and, you know, maybe one, one, two chapters a month. So that'd be August, September, October, November, which gets all of them out in time, which presupposes that we have all the previous process done, including your reviews, which means you guys need to start to review soon. Again, it all depends on, on the path you choose to take. We have ways to manage the risks of legislation coming in, legislation not coming in.
No, I was just going to ask, I mean, in years past, you guys have been doing this a long time.
Uh-huh.
Why do you think the select boards of the past have been so reluctant to, to move along with the review process and...
We were really, really far along on the first six chapters in... Karen, do you remember when you had the 4:00 start?
Yes, all I remember is it was the first year that Mike was gone.
Right. A couple of years ago, we had a town meeting, annual town meeting, that we scheduled to start at, we, the select board, so you, scheduled to start at 4:00 PM on the expectation we would have bylaws there. Unfortunately, legal review was held up for reasons we've never understood, but that's, we were ready to do chapters 1 through 6 at that point. We're back to ready to do more than chapters 1 through 6.
I guess, for me, you're right, there was a lot of information there, but I'm still a little confused in the process.
Okay.
The select board has to do certain things, or you would like us to do certain things, is what I heard.
Yep.
But I haven't learned any process or plan for that. How do those two come together? Is, should we leave it up to our TA to organize all this, to Austin? Do we have to participate? Where are we in getting things to us, for example?
You are here and here, so...
Where's the stuff to come to us?
How soon do you want to start reviewing?
Well, that's up to the board, I guess, then, if, if we're going to do it sooner or later.
I'm not kidding.
Maybe Austin can give us some feedback on that, too. Not tonight, maybe, but, you know, I mean, you're giving us a challenge, so I'm saying, okay, I think the board, personally, I think the board is up for the challenge, but I'm not seeing the pathway here.
Right, so, there has to be an agreement between the bylaw committee and select board when to start the reviews.
Okay.
Is it when and what? You said for us to choose which ones?
Well, some, the very first one would be the same no matter what, because chapters 1 and 2, you really have to review absolutely every single bylaw. You really get options further down, which is one of the reasons you have the, the table of contents there, so you can sort of pick and choose beyond them, beyond there, what you're interested in. And in fact, 1, 2, I would think you would want to review all of 3, because it's all the money in the town. For at least the first one, legal, uh, town council, you would, you have to review, the other ones are optional. Multimember bodies, you probably want to review all of those, because those are bodies of the town, and, mm, all of those appointed by the select board. Once you get to public and private ways, it gets a little dicier which ones you want to. Some people will be very interested in scenic roads, some people could be interested in connecting driveways to roads. If you want to review, if your decision is to review every bylaw, that's straightforward, if the revision, if the decision of the body is to review some of them, you just need to tell us which ones.
Is there a priority? In other words, are some more important than others, so we can do those first?
Well, I would always start at chapter 1.
Okay.
And move, and move down. Because everything's interrelated, chapter 1 is general stuff that applies to all the bylaws, so you have to start there. If you don't understand that, you're not, you're going to miss something further downstream. Chapter 2 is general government, it's the select board, the town administrator, select board, a town meeting, you have the list, you can actually read it, I don't need to memorize it.
All right.
Those, again, start at the beginning and work your way down, would be my suggestion as how I would set it up.
Okay, thank you.
And, I am not joking when I say this, if you said, "Let's get together next week and redo, and next Monday and do chapters 1 and 2," I'd say, "That's short notice, but okay."
That is short notice.
And the goal would be for the board to approve what you have updated?
That's correct.
Okay.
Or review and send it back to you?
Well, we'll be talking about it in a meeting.
Okay.
Is it also intended to be, call it educational?
I'm sure it will be.
Um, well, I'm just thinking from, from the, because there are so many, like, going back to what you were talking about, the substantive versus consequential changes, is it necessary for the board to review anything that's just substantive, or should they be focused on the consequential changes?
There is no question the consequential changes are more important than substantive changes. That being said, I can't, I can't tell you what your priorities are. I, I believe firmly that the, that the substantive but inconsequential changes, you don't need to spend a lot of time on. In fact, the consequential changes document has a list of things that we know that we did, that are substantive definitionally, but do not change, are not consequential to the bylaw. They'll rename from Board of Selectment to Select Board. For example, it's done throughout. You want to review every single one? Please, let's do that. As I said, there are lists of those kinds of changes that we make. And the truth is, some bylaws have been radically restructured because they were not clear. And not only were they not clear, they have one of my least favorite things, lawyer speak, with paragraphs this long, that you have to read it three times to figure out what it's really trying to say. This is what I go through, every time I go through Mass General Law, I understand the pain. And so we have taken the time to say, oh, this is really one thought, and we, it's a different thought, it's a different notion, it's different provision, so it's a new section, or subsection. We've divided big sections into smaller sections. Those are not consequential changes, as long as the provisions are the same. It's only when we add or remove a provision that becomes consequential.
The reason I ask you that, is because we're kind of like the last before it goes to legal review.
Yep.
So, our names are going to be on that. So I'm trying to look at, if you will, because we're submitting it to the town, so I'm just want to make sure that we're doing it right, and everything comes the way it should, because we're ultimately responsible for those bylaws.
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me, Peter. Go ahead, go ahead.
All I can ask is, I know we need to have public information sessions on this earlier, because for those of us who are involved in other things for the town meeting, I knew I couldn't make it to all of the ones that he had that year, we tried rushing them through.
They were rushed, that, the end of the process was absolutely compressed.
And some of those discussions brought up a lot of concerns, I know the town administrator bylaw brought up a lot of concerns, and you didn't even cover most of that second part, because we stopped at the town administrator bylaw, because you had a lot of discussion that evening on that. So I think we're going to need to have multiple, multiple, multiples, like the information sessions we had for the two and a half override, to bring multiple people in, to bring the discussions. It's going to have to be on afternoons, it's going to have to be all kinds of things, because you can't expect people just to buy it on that night, you have to have it multiple times and get the questions out there, and then get the word out, so that people are aware. You know, I think, you got to try to get most of the public involved.
Michelle Bean-Meat had her hand up.
Oh, Michelle?
Hi, thank you. I, I've been to one or two of the sessions, and I've, I've expressed concerns in the past, and I will express them again tonight. I think this committee started as kind of a committee to put all the bylaws into one spot as they were written, and it kind of morphed into a little bit more as, as what we see now. And I'm just concerned about having bylaws changed or modified by committee, and I get it that they want to have legal review in the select board, but I also think that bylaws that, that we're asking to have changed, and I understand the process, you want to go through, um, town meeting, but I think, I think it really would make more sense to, as Harry mentioned, pick the biggest ones that really are, like, at odds with each other, or something that's really super unclear, and do it piecemeal. To try to jam these chapters, which took like two or three hours per chapter to explain, isn't, isn't a feasible idea to do via town meeting. And, and I'm just, and, and I think, I think we need to prioritize it for sure, but I also think, you know, what do we want from our bylaws? They've been working, are they perfect? No, but I'm not so sure about rewriting them, if, especially from a point of view of not really understanding, if we don't understand what was in, what was in place and why it was in place, and trying to change things without understanding what, what's there, I'm just concerned about that.
May I respond?
Absolutely.
This is one of the reasons that we, that the very first review step is a subject matter expert. Sometimes that has to be the select board, but more often, it's a department head who knows how stormwater works. Bad example, since we don't have one now, but I think I know what you mean, I think you know what I mean. And then, um, what was the other point? I've already forgotten it. So, yes, the, so, in fact, to respond to both Karen and Michelle, that public information session about town administrator did cause changes. They're coming through for re-review, that's part of the package. That, the arrows work the way they work in order to make the process flexible enough, although not necessarily fast enough.
Well, I guess, I guess that depends what you mean by fast enough, because, changes for fast enough, because a lot of us voted for the town administrator position the way it is, and it took several years to get that position approved, if you remember correctly.
Oh, I remember.
Some of us don't want a strong town administrator. If there's a strong person in there that can get promoted within the role, that's one thing, but to just change it carte blanche, I think is a dangerous slippery slope to go down, and I don't agree with that at all. And, and there, there are other things that I also don't agree with, which concerns me, because I understand what's going on, and I, I've been keeping my ear to this, and a lot of people haven't been. So to just kind of shove it down our throats, is, this is the way it's running, well, is it, but is it running that way because it needs to, or is it running that way because that's people, the way they're, they're running it? And I think we need to be clear about what the townspeople really want in these positions, and what we really want for our bylaws, and not just have it thrown out there that, well, we've kind of changed the way we do things, but if that's the rule, that's the rule.
Those are the set of chain proposals that the bylaw committee is making after review, and that's, and people will agree and people will disagree. I will say, to really, really, really fix it, bylaws aren't the answer, the charter's the answer. And we have been doing a lot of this work to feed into the charter. The first four, four chapters, I think, maybe five, could flow almost directly into a charter. Subject to other changes, you know, oh, it's time to go to a town manager instead of a town administrator, that's something that we can't predict or, or try to deal with, that's a whole different discussion, but to change, to have more radical changes than to describe what we do, which is what the bio, the ad hoc bylaw committee is doing, we're describing what we're doing, would be better served with a charter than with more bylaw changes.
To, to further your question a little bit more, when you're looking at, okay, presenting a bylaw regarding a certain, uh, let's say, department, okay? To have that person here, the department head, to explain what's going on and why, why you're looking at these things, would be probably more beneficial to everybody than just trying to gang our way through the, through the bylaws.
That may be, that turns into a scheduling question more than anything else.
So at this point, we still have to wait for the stuff to come to us, regardless of what happens. So, we got to start that, so.
Anything else?
You filled my head, Peter.
Yeah, we got a lot to do.
Going to say, I, I spent enough time, thank you for your insights.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Michelle, for your comments.
All right, where are we now?
So what?
Goals and objectives?
Yep.
Are we going with, I mean, there's really nothing...
I, I just left them on there as a placeholder.
Yeah, we're going to have to make up who does what, and...
Yeah, because you guys will have to reorganize that.
When did we do that last year? I don't remember. When did we get together?
We just did that in December, I believe.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah. Yep, it was fairly recent.
All the things on the wall and everything?
What, the board, the goals and objectives?
Yeah.
Yes.
I thought it was, okay, so we'll put that off and out and try to figure out a date?
Yeah.
Do we need a motion to move that to a next board meeting?
Uh, no.
I think it's just standing in January.
Yeah.
Just a quick, I mean, my hope would be we have a goal-setting retreat or two over the summer, because I, I view the goal-setting process as also the beginning of the budget process for the town administrator, town departments, and finance committee to set priorities for the year, so.
Great.
Maybe when things go a little slower, over the summer.
Good luck. So, make a motion to go on an executive session, or do we have to end this one first?
So you're going to make a motion to adjourn to executive session for reason number three, to return to open session following?
Okay. Uh, at this point in time, I make a motion to adjourn to executive session for reason number three. I have a second?
And to return to open session.
And to return to open session afterwards.
Now, just, just a friendly amendment to that, just to clarify that this is, with respect to a collective bargaining agreement with ASME Local 93, the Public Works.
Okay. Make a motion to adjourn to executive session, reason number three, to discuss union contract with Department of Public Works.
Am I the second man here?
I think so.
Second.
Uh, vote?
Second, I.
Matt's in, yep.
Ledger, I.
Galvin, I. All right. Like to, at this time, make a motion to approve collecting bargaining, bargaining agreement between the town of Rutland... between the Town of Rutland and American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees Council 93 to begin on July 1, 2023.
I'll second.
No discussion on my end?
No discussion? Roll call?
Sekman, aye.
Mattson, aye.
Ledger, aye.
Galvin, aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations to these guys.
You're mad at me now.
Now just a regular motion to adjourn.
All right, motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
Roll call?
Sekman, aye.
Mattson, aye.
Ledger, aye.
Galvin, aye.